Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Madam Vice President.
How are you today?
Good.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get ready to begin, it looks like. There we go. Okay, good morning. We're gonna start the Taxation Finance and Economic Development Committee today, and welcome you all to this virtual hearing. In attendance, we have, I see Kalen Young representing the Council President's Office. Kalen, are you present?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. We also have members of the committee. I'm Sharon Green Middleton, Chair of the Committee, representing the 6th District and Vice President of the Council. We also have Danielle McCray, Vice Chairwoman of the Sec-- and also a member of the Committee and representing the 2nd District, Councilwoman McCray. Thank you. We also have Councilman Ed Ryssinger representing the 10th District and member of the Committee.
Here.
We also, I'm looking to see, we also have Councilmember Robert Stokes of the 12th District and member of the Committee. Thank you. And I'm looking for another member of the Committee is Councilman Eric Costello of the 11th District here.
Present, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, all members are present. And as mentioned, we have Kalen Young representing the Council President's Office and representing the Mayor's Office. Do I see Matt Stegman?
I am here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hi, Matt. And we also have Rebecca Simmons from the Office of the President.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I also see Dominique McGally representing the Office of the President. So, we will move on. We have two bills, one, we have three bills today. The first one is a sale of property and the second one is an acquisition of property. And when the agencies go through, you might as well go through both of those bills together, but we'll vote on them separately. So, when I call your office, be prepared to testify for Bill Number 190364 and Bill Number 190440. So, I'll read first Bill Number 190364, which is a sale of property, former bed of a variable with alley located between two 10-foot alleys bounded by Boone Street, East 22nd Street, Greenmont Avenue, and East 23rd Street, for the purpose of authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in a certain parcel of land known as the former bed of a variable with alley located between two 10-foot alleys bounded by Boone Street, East 22nd Street, Greenmont Avenue, and East 23rd Street, and no longer needed for public use and providing for special effective date. This bill was introduced on April 15, 2019, and the bill was sponsored by Council President Brandon Scott. And then also, Bill Number 190440 is an acquisition of property, temporary construction easements and permanent easements, for the purpose of authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to acquire by purchase or condemnation the fee simply or other interests as the Director of Transportation may deem necessary in portions of a descriptive property on the south side of Waterview Avenue, rear of 2200-2208 Round Road, and known as Ward 25, Section 05, Block 7610, Lot 19, as shown on plat R W 20-36410 dated November 8, 2016, in the Office of the Director of Transportation and needed for the Seaman Avenue Storm Drain Project and providing for a special effective date. And this bill was introduced on September 9, 2019, also sponsored by Council President Brandon Scott. And so, we're gonna start with the agency reports from the agency representatives. And we'll first start with the-- We'll start with the Department of Finance first.
Morning, Councilwoman Middleton. This is Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our reports. We do not oppose either of these bills.
Thank you. Law Department.
Hi, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Ruley for the Law Department. We approve both bills for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Department of Planning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Martin French for the Planning Department. With regard to Bill 364, the Planning Department recommends approval of this bill. The property is needed in order to allow construction of a gymnasium for the Mother Seton Academy. They had acquired all the other properties on either side of this particular piece of alley. I need the alley to complete the lot consolidation. With regard to Bill 190440, Planning Commission reviewed this particular bill. She is recommending approval unanimously if this bill be passed by the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Robert Pipick from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And DHCD stands by its reports for the two bills on 190364. We have no objection and wish the academy well. And on 190440, we defer to the Department of Transportation.
Okay, thank you. Department of Transportation.
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Liam Davis with the Department of Transportation. The Department of Transportation supports both bills. I think the Planning Department summed up each bill pretty nicely. Again, 190364 will help facilitate and allow Mother Seton Hall Academy to install and construct a gymnasium. And 19-440 will allow for DPW to install additional stormwater infrastructure in Cherry Hill. Occasionally, Cherry Hill, whenever there's a nice rainstorm, there will be some flooding in the neighborhood. So, this is something that we hope helps to address that. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Department of Real Estate.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members. This is Jim Knighton from the Comptroller's Office on behalf of the Department of Real Estate. The Department of Real Estate stands by its position on both bills, which is that we support both bills and respectfully request a favorable vote.
Okay. Do I have any comments or questions from the Committee at this point on either of these two bills?
Madam Chair, this is Marsha Collins from DPW. Did you want our reports?
Yes, Marsha. Sure, thank you.
That's quite okay. Again, Marsha Collins representing the Department of Public Works. We are here in support of both bills, Bill 19-0364. We feel there are more than adequate protections in the legislation should there be any utilities that will not be abandoned or removed. On the second bill, 19-0440, it was not referred to our agency, but the Department of Transportation introduced the bill on our behalf. I have two people with DPW, should there be any questions from the Committee about the project itself that stimulated the bill.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions at this point from the Committee? Okay, there are two people. I'm gonna mention their names. I don't know if you're, who you're representing, but Tracy Moffett? Moffett?
That's correct. Tracy Moffett. I'm with the Department of Public Works.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And Sherrod Hicks?
Yes, Sherrod Hicks, also from Department of Public Works.
Okay, thank you. Did, do either of you have anything to say on 0440?
Yes.
We will, go ahead, Tracy.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Tracy, go ahead.
Yes. We would just like to give you a brief understanding of why the project is needed, you know, why it's important. You know, due to our city's old infrastructure, we did have a collapsed outfall structure that compromised the public's right of way and caused erosion of its slope channels, which is impacting the community, the property, as well as the middle branch. So, this is one of the, right now, it has been temporarily repaired, and we need to go in and permanently repair it. So, it is something that we've been trying to work with the, you know, the property owner for a very long time. And it's gotten to the point where we had to come here with this whole, you know, for this situation. So, but yes, this is a project that definitely needs to happen to make sure that we-- and whatever the floods may be, as well as erosion that is continually to the embankments of this water channel.
Okay, thank you. And Sherrod, is there anything else you needed to add?
Um, no, I think Tracy summed it up nicely.
Okay. Councilman Ryssinger, I think this is the 10th District. Is there anything you'd like to add on this particular bill?
I just wanna thanks DPW. I know it's been a problem in the past. I know my constituents would appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Hold on one second. Okay. Okay. So, we're going, is there a motion to move the first bill, which is 19-0364?
So moved, Councilman Stokes.
So moved by Stokes. Do I have a second?
Second by Ryssinger.
Second by Ryssinger. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray? Vice Chair McCray? Do you have a vote? Oh, you set up. I can't hear you. For some reason, I can't, oh, yes. Yes, for McCray. Councilman Costello? Yes. Councilman Ryssinger?
Yes.
Yes. And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. This bill will now move to second reader at Monday's council meeting. Is there a motion to move the bill 19-0440?
Ryssinger moves.
Ryssinger, second.
Second, Councilman Stokes.
Second for Stokes. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray? Is a yes. Councilman Costello? Is a yes. Councilman Ryssinger?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will also move to second reader at Monday's council meeting. Thank you. And now, we'll move to Bill Number 20-0605, Minority and Women's Business Utilization Emergencies, for the purpose of clarifying and expanding the conditions for a city agency to obtain a waiver from the city's minority business and women's business contract utilization requirements, requiring that if an agency receives a waiver for an emergency, the agency submit a report to the Board of Estimates and the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, defining certain terms and generally relating to greater transparency and utilization of minority and women's business in city emergency contracting. This bill was introduced on September 21, 2020. The bill was sponsored by Councilman Chris Burnett. And I now yield to the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Committee. Actually, I think this is my first time before taxation.
Yes.
It's good to see you all.
You're welcome.
Right. It only took me almost four years to get here. And so, this legislation came to light for me in, I want to say around February or March of this year, when we had our first round of COVID-related budget briefings as the line of questions and as did a few others on this Committee, as well as Councilmember Pinkett, around the procurement, emergency procurement process and wanting to make sure that minority businesses were included in all emergency procurements moving forward, knowing that the current pandemic was, is something that was going to be stretching and extended period of time and wanting, you know, make sure that there's equity in that process and that minority businesses are not left behind during this time. And so, we began the discussion then, revisited it around June, July of this year, just to see how things had been going. And it was clear that a little bit more needed to be worked into the code to ensure that the utilization of minority-owned businesses in Baltimore was on par where it should be even in an emergency. And so, started asking questions about process and tried to make sure that we drafted something that both made sure that MBEs were a part of the procurement process and having an opportunity to be as competitive as possible in this environment, especially we know that this disease has had a huge impact on our local economy and national economy. And two, wanting to be cognizant of the process itself and, you know, knowing that in an emergency, things still need to move a little bit faster than under normal circumstances. And so, the legislation does a couple of things to the procurement process. It encouraged the development of a list of contractors that agencies can use for very common things. And I want to note that this would apply not just for the current emergency, but things like snow events, et cetera, but making sure that there is a single list that all agencies have, and it's one list, not multiple lists that are separate. And so, that everybody's on the same page and has the same opportunity to compete for city dollars. And then, it also has a more reporting requirement for agencies to be a lot more transparent about vendor utilization during emergency procurements. That's the gist of it. I do want to note to the Committee that I sent you an email this morning. Though you should have received probably two emails. One had a list of amendments from the Law Department that we worked through together. So, they work on law with those to make some adjustments to the bill. So, you should have that. And we worked with the Mayor's Office and Finance late into last evening to make a few more minor changes. So, the amendments that you received this morning should be just one package. So, one are, they're all pretty technical in ensuring that, you know, the bill does what we intended it to do, and law can speak to that. Because in both the Law Report and the Finance Report, they mentioned the need for amendments. And so, we worked through those with them. And so, those, we're all good. Well, I think real good. We're on the same page now. And then, the additional amendments push out the effective date to 90 days from 30 days. And that was just to ensure that all of the agencies had time to adjust to these changes. And then, it also pushes out the reporting requirements from 15 days to 30 days to the Board of Estimates. And again, just in trying to acknowledge that this is, you know, new revisions that we're trying to work on during a pandemic. And so, making sure that agencies have enough time to adjust to these changes. So, I'll stop there, Madam Chair. Law and Finance can speak to these conversations and their feedback on the bill. But we did work in tandem on all the amendments. So, I'm hoping the Committee will consider all of them.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the sponsor of the bill at this time from the Committee? Hearing, none. I personally think that this is another bill that leads us into the right direction of equity and all the things that we have been really trying to work to correct within the last four years or more. So, thank you for introduction of this bill. We're now gonna take, listen to the agency representatives, and I want us to start with the Office of Employment Development. Is, do we have the representative from the Office of Employment Development here at this time?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Middleton. This is Mackenzie Garvin. I just hopped on. There was a little bit of confusion about our bill report and the login information. I'm the liaison, but it was sent to a different person. So, we're just working that out.
Okay.
If there's a possibility, if we could submit--
Circle back? You, okay. Did you want me to circle back to you at the end, or?
I likely need to submit our report at a later time. There was a little bit of confusion with which report was required and who received the information. So, I just got forwarded it now. It's the fault of no one. It's just, you know, the nature that we're in right now. We have some additional time to submit the report.
Yes, but can you verbally say that you're unfavorable of this bill? Can your office--
I can say verbally, yes, but we'll also submit a written report if we are able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. You're welcome. Next, the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office. Is there a representative from that office? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and move to the Office of Minority and Women-owned Business, Paul Taylor?
Sure, certainly. I would like to just say I'm in favor of the bill, I think, and the corrections that were made to make sure that the utilization does not circumvent the existing program, but stays squarely focused on emergency contracts. In addition, I think, and technology is gonna enable this for us, a posting, it's similar to what we were doing with the Joint Information Center, but now that we have teams, if the communication could be posted so that there's, similar to a requirements page, so that agencies and other organizations can see the requirements within the city system, see the requirements, because we may have knowledge of contractors that might be available to help with some of those contracts. But yes, I agree with the waiver program and the bill as written incorrectly.
Okay, thank you. Matt, do you have any information from the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office?
I do not. I know they have been part of our internal discussions about this bill. And as the Councilman, as the bill sponsor stated, I think the amendments from the Law Department and the additional amendments that he have resolved most of the concerns that all of the agencies have.
Madam Chair, this is Elena DePietre from the Law Department.
Yes.
There has been some turnover, and so, that's why they don't have a separate report to this bill. But we did discuss it with them, with the people who are taking over down there. It should be fine. And they're on board with it.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go to the Department of Finance, and then we'll save the Law Department for last. The Department of Finance, do you have something on the screen? We're gonna put, I think, we're first gonna put up what you have on the screen. Here we go. And I think I saw Director--
Yes. Good morning, Chairwoman Middleton, Vice Chair McCray, honorable members of the Council. This is Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. In general, the Department of Finance supports the goals of this legislation. The Department of Finance recognizes the importance of advancing equity and procurement by ensuring that MBEs and WBEs are able to understand, navigate the contracting processes that lead to the emergency procurements, which require a rapid response, but do not inadvertently create disincentives or barriers for MBE/WBE participation. Now, this legislation does not alter the duties or operations of the Department of Finance, but it does place additional responsibilities on the contracting agencies that have requested emergency procurements and the MBU Office in coordinating with the contracting agencies. The Department of Finance originally had several concerns related to the original legislation, but as Councilman Burnett has indicated, there's been a series of amendments which have largely eliminated Finance's concerns. However, two concerns that Finance still has regards the reporting timeframe, which was originally 15 days, which will now be moved to 30 days. Finance believes that 45 days would be more appropriate to give agencies sufficient time to prepare the information while they're dealing with whatever the nature of the emergency might be. And secondly, the concern is the implementation date for the legislation. Councilman Burnett was moving it from 30 days to 90 days. Finance believes that implementation date of July 1, the beginning of the new fiscal year, would be more beneficial to helping agencies adjust to the new legislation, given that we're still dealing with COVID-19. We're still in the middle of it. And imposing a new process in the middle of the present emergency that we're in might be a burden for agencies to undertake. So, we would propose July 1 of '21. Those were the two primary issues of concern. Finance supports the legislation, these amendments. Finance supports the legislation with these amendments.
Madam Chair. Um, uh, yes, uh, go ahead, Councilman Costello, question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Director Raymond, just to confirm, talking about the language in the first package of amendments.
Okay.
Sponsor that says, as soon as possible, after the execution of any emergency procurement under Article Six, Subsection eleven E of the Baltimore City Charter was necessary, but no later than fifteen days after the contract execution, the agency shall submit a report to the Board of Estimates in the office stating the following, correct?
Correct.
For the, so you're recommending forty-five days instead of fifteen days?
But let's be clear, Councilman Burnett, in his comments, is offering a moment to go from fifteen days to thirty days. I, I'm suggesting that, uh, we need, that agencies need forty-five days as opposed to the thirty days.
Okay, understood. Yeah, I, that makes sense from, uh, operational logistical standpoint, the lack of information being requested here when knee-deep in an emergency. I think that unrealistic to guarantee be submitted within thirty days, I think. Madam Chair, that's just my, my opinion. I think the forty-five day piece makes a little more sense, but that's one comment on that one piece. Thank you, Director Raymond.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, I see Tony DeFranco on here from Legislative Reference. Do you have, um, updated copies of these amendments?
Madam Chair, I sent them to you probably at the top of the hour.
Okay.
To committee staff as well.
Okay, I just wanted you to verbally, um, say that, so thank you. Um, are there any more comments, Director Raymond? Did you want to add? Okay.
That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Any more comments from the committee to the Finance Department? Okay, and then lastly, um, we'll hear from the Law Department. I know you have a slew of amendments as well.
Hi, Madam Chair, yes, this is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. Um, we had, uh, been contacted by Councilman Burnett about a week or so ago to, to see, um, he asked for our thoughts on this bill. And when he told us what he wanted it to do, it, it became obvious that the, the bill as written didn't do what he wanted. So that's why the amendments look extensive. It essentially does what he originally wanted, which was to have MBO be involved in emergency procurements. The way the bill's written in the first reader version, it sticks this, um, language in basically what is, what is not the correct part of the current MBO law. So all the amendments do is move it to the correct area and, and do what the council member had originally intended. And, um, we've seen what the, what Legislative Reference has drafted, and it, you know, obviously better formats what, what we had proposed, and we're fine with their amendments. So, I'm happy to take any questions that, that you might have.
Does, uh, the committee have any questions for Hillary? Thank you, Hillary. I, I'd like to go back to Finance, and, um, if I may, hear from, um, the sponsor of the bill, Councilman Burnett. I, so there's this, I, I just want, we, I, I think we need clarification on the forty-five days versus the thirty days, and how, do you have comments of, about that? Or do you, um, support Director Raymond?
Uh, I mean, and, and we spoke to, I spoke to Mr. Stagman last night about this, um, and, you know, we were, they, they mentioned thirty to forty-five days is usually where, um, under normal circumstances, um, this, this could be done. I, I, I don't have strong reservations one way or the other. I, I, you know, for me, going from fifteen to thirty was just still trying to keep in the intention of the bill, which is, you know, we're operating under emergency circumstances, understanding that a larger window is needed, but, um, wanting to make sure that there's also a sense of urgency in being transparent, uh, with the public, which is what this reporting requirement would do. Uh, but I, I don't have, I, I can't sit here and say I have strong reservations about another fifteen days. Um, that's what the committee's okay with.
Okay, thank you for your follow-up on that comment. Um. Okay, so if there's no more questions from the committee, um, I... Uh, there is one more person that I think we need to hear from. Uh, and go back to the off, the, um, well, the Baltimore Development Corporation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and I'm comfortable, thank you so much. Um, this is Stephanie Sue from the Baltimore Development Corporation. Um, just wanted to say that you stand by our report and has no objection to this bill.
Okay, thank you. We'll add that to the file. So, we do have some public testimony now that we're going to hear. Um, I'll just ask again, does the committee have any more questions before we go to public testimony? And? And anyone, uh, when we call your name, use the raise hand function, and we'll start with the public testimony. Okay. At this point, use your raise hand function if you do want to testify, and then we'll call on you in that order. And I'll say that one more time, is use the raise hand function if you would like to testify, and we'll call on you to testify. And I see no hands raised, so, uh, we have no, um, one that wants to testify from the public. Just give me a thirty-second recess. All right, ready to begin again. Okay, we're going to, first, we're going to take a motion to, um, uh, move the modified... We, we, I want a motion to move the amendments with the modified, uh, forty-five days, thirty days, uh, to the forty-five days. So we need to vote on that first. Do I have a motion from the committee to move that amendment?
Riceinger moves.
Riceinger moves, do I have a second? This is to move the thirty days to the forty-five days, the modified forty, I need a second from the committee. McCray, thank you. In the package, correct? Okay, then we're going to, um, I need a motion to move the Law Department's, um, package of amendments. Do I have a motion to move the Law Department amendments as a package? Or a package of amendments? Um, a motion from... Is that, Ed, did I hear a motion?
Riceinger moves.
Riceinger moves, do I have a second? And, um, McCray, second. Okay, now I'm going to move. Oh. No, I got to go back. Okay, we got to go that, back, because, um, recess a minute. We got to do the individual vote, hold on a second. Okay, we got to go back to the Second Amendment and take a vote on the Second Amendment individually. I'm jumping the gun here. Um, Chair Middleton, yes, Vice Chair McCray? Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Riceinger?
Yes.
Yes, and Councilman Stokes? Councilman Stokes? Yes. Yes, now I can. Thank you, Councilman Stokes. Okay, um, we have votes from the Law, we have to do the vote on the Law Department's amendments. Do I hear a motion? For the Law Department?
Riceinger moves.
Riceinger moves, second. Do I have a second? McCray, second. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray? Is a yes. Councilman Costello? Councilman Costello, yes. Councilman Riceinger?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. So now, I think we got through all of the amendments from both the Department of Finance and the Law Department. Is there a motion to move the bill favorable as amended?
Riceinger moves.
Riceinger, and a second. McCray, second, just a little bit of technical difficulties there. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray? Yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Riceinger?
Yes.
Yes, and Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you all. We got through all of the, um, amendments on both sides, and, uh, the bill moves favorable as amended to the, and this will go at second reader at Monday's council meeting, and this hearing is adjourned. Thank you all.